So we are live, we can begin.
Great, thank you so much, Tricia. And I'd like to welcome everybody to this evening's special Board of Education meeting on May 28th, 2021. We do have a translator online with us this evening that will be translating this meeting into Spanish for our Spanish-speaking audience, so I would like to welcome you Mesa, I'm sorry, to the meeting. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, my pleasure.
So before we go ahead and I'll do some introductions, but before we do that, I would like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and establish a quorum.
Board President Sarah Heim?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Knopfert?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palastriani? And Carl is president.
May I please receive a motion to adopt the agenda?
Would you adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting?
My second.
Board President Sarah Heim?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Knopfert?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palastriani?
Yes.
Thank you. Seaberry, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure thing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. On the agenda this evening, as was stated in Tricia Zarevich's email out to the community, we will be having an introduction and presentation by our new superintendent Ted Knight. That is Agenda Item 2A. This presentation and the introduction will be conducted with Ted Knight. And alongside him, as I mentioned in our board meeting, we will have our student journalist Alicia Kruger moderating the questions and the back and forth between herself and Ted. So thank you so much for joining us this evening, Alicia. For those of you in the audience who don't know Alicia, I've had the opportunity to work with her on a couple of Sandpiper stories, and it's just been an absolute pleasure. Alicia is a senior at Carmel High School and has attended Carmel Unified Schools her entire life. And after serving on the Carmel High School New Year's staff, the Sandpiper, for two years, this year she is editor-in-chief, so congratulations for that. And Alicia has also been covering our superintendent search, so it was very timely when Alicia reached out to me. She wanted to finish up the piece that she was writing. So again, I thought this was a great opportunity to incorporate her into this discussion, and she can also wrap up the last story of her of her career at Carmel High School. We're all very proud of Alicia. Next fall, she'll be attending NYU with a double major in journalism and public policy. So on behalf of the Board of Education, Alicia, we do wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Um, so before we get into, before we get into the conversation between Ted and Alicia, I would like to let the community know that the Board will now accept public comment on this agenda item and this agenda item only. So if there is anybody who would like to make a comment regarding this agenda item, please do so now.
Now is the time to raise your hand if you have a public comment on this agenda item. We will not be revisiting this again in the future. So now is your time if you'd like to make a comment. I will pause. Last call for public comment. Seeing no hands raised.
Great, thank you, Tricia. So thank you again, Ted, for joining us on a Friday evening of a long three-day weekend. We appreciate you taking the time. We will have about an hour this evening with Ted. And thank you to those of you in the community who have submitted questions that will help guide the conversation between Alicia and Ted this evening. And since we only have an hour, for those of you that asked any questions that possibly are not answered this evening, Ted will be working on compiling an FAQ with answers to all of the questions that came in from our community, and we will be posting that and making that public. So we want to make sure that in one way, shape, or form, everybody has answers to their questions. And before I turn this over, last sort of housekeeping, I would like to let everybody know that this is our first town hall with Ted, but it's definitely not our last. We're hoping to set up a regular cadence of town halls after Ted gets on board. So we're excited to to add this as a way of continuing to communicate with our community. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Alicia.
Hello, okay, so, um, welcome, Mr. Knight. Um, I am just gonna ask you a couple of questions and we can start with our interview.
I'm excited to get started, Alicia. Thank you again for being here.
Of course, yeah. Um, so I wanted to start by talking about how lucky we all are to have grown up in a place like this. It's so beautiful, and I'm excited for you to get to explore the beauty of this area. From elementary to high school, CUSD has worked really hard to gain an Ocean Guardian School, gain the Green Ribbon Award, and be environmentally friendly overall. I know at the high school, it's really important to all students. What are your priorities in regards to environmentalism?
It's a great question, Alicia, and being a green ribbon school is definitely something to be proud of. My current district, we have four green ribbon schools and our green ribbon district, which I believe exceeds any other district in the state of Colorado. So definitely something that I'm passionate about and something that many people in this district have have worked hard to accomplish. My goal in in furthering environmental education or making sure we focus on the focus on the environment in our educational system is to let the students drive that. In my experience, students tend to have the best ideas in terms of how they can make changes or improvements at the local level. And so I feel it would be my job as superintendent to make sure that I'm creating the culture where student voice is celebrated and that we have the time to bring students in and ask them what they're passionate about and what ideas they have. And we can do that at the elementary level, just doesn't have to be at the high school. I think oftentimes we talk with high school students, but we've had great success in in my career in multiple schools, bringing in students as young as as elementary school and asking them what they're passionate about and asking them what ideas they have. And you know, at the elementary level, it could be just as as simple as composting their their lunch trash, but they feel they're making a difference, and it starts at a young age. And so I would want to make sure that I'm doing everything I can to provide the resources to our school and and setting that tone that we need to let our students drive a lot of that work and sometimes just get out of their way and make sure that we are providing the resources and taking any obstacles out of the way, because they tend to have some great ideas, oftentimes better than we do as adults, as as you probably well know as a graduating high school student yourself.
Well, I suppose. In addition to that, I was going to ask you how you engage with students. So you mentioned you want your students to lead, you want your students to come to you. How does that work in kind of a dynamic where you're in charge and your students attend school regularly? How do you plan on engaging with your student stakeholders?
I I believe student ownership is very important, and I want to make sure that students own their education and that that they are very involved. And so I think you do that informally and formally. And whether it's a student advisory group or meeting with maybe student council leadership or a group of students, I think it's very important to have a a formal and cyclical opportunity to meet with students, to help students develop goals that they would like to accomplish, and and make sure that they know that I'm available and we have a constant stream of communication. But I also believe informally, you will see me in schools a lot. I'm not in my office very much, and I want to be out in schools. I want to be talking with students. I want to be talking with teachers. And so I think informally, asking kids how it's going, asking what they're excited, what they're excited about, what they're proud of, and asking what they need from me. And I think it's a great way to just very informally make sure that students know that we at the district office care. I know they're having those conversations with their teachers. I know they're having those conversations with their principals. But I also want to make sure that they understand that those of us that support schools at the central office want to elevate their voice and want to make sure that that they have a say in their education. And we have to empower students if we truly want them to own their education. And so a big part of empowering students is making sure that they know they have a voice and that they see some action out of out of their responses.
Yeah, and CUSD really prides itself in providing top-notch public education for a really uniquely diverse population. What's really interesting is we're one of the largest geographic school districts, and we have a super small student population, super small employees population. Um, as a result, you have students who are living really completely different lifestyles. And in correlation to your comment, living different lifestyles means they have different viewpoints and have different ideas and different needs. How do you plan on understanding the dynamic of this community at its at its physical center and its outlet and communities and managing the different needs of those who live within both?
It's a great question and definitely something that I'm interested in visiting all corners of the community and getting to know all of our students, all of our families, understanding if there are different value systems or different beliefs across across the district. A having a geographically diverse district is nothing new for me. My current district is, I believe, about 900 square miles, and that range is anywhere from comprehensive high schools that are that have 2,500 kids in it to a one-room schoolhouse that still has "Ride Your Horse to School" day. And so very familiar with kind of a diverse stakeholder group. And really, the only way you get to know what those different values are is to get out in the community, and that means every community, and meet with parents, meet with students, meet with community members, and really get a a rich understanding of what they value, of their traditions, of the history. And the good news is, regardless of the community, we all want the same thing for our children, right? We all want our children to be successful. We want a school district that has, you know, the the best and brightest staff members. We want great facilities for our students. And so at the end of the day, I do believe at the core of education, what we all want for students is similar. Sometimes there's some disagreement in how we get there, but I do believe that we have a talented enough staff and enough resources that we should be able to meet the needs of each and every student. And it's just a matter of me making sure that I'm hearing all voices, finding what is common about all of us and making sure we have things in place for for each student, but then also finding out where we differ and what's unique about each community and making sure that we honor that.
Yeah, you came from a school district with approximately 7,000 employees. Here at CUSD, we have about 500. Obviously, this allows for staff and administration at all sites to gain a close relationship with those at the district office. In other words, there aren't layers to go through before teachers have get to speak to you. Um, can you define your leadership style with staff and administration? How it may or may not differ as a result of the flexibility a small directory offers?
It it is definitely one of the things that I am most excited about in terms of joining Carmel Unified. You are correct, our current district, 70,000 students, 7,000 employees, and again, a very diverse and broad geographic area. And sometimes that is difficult to build relationships with each and every stakeholder, and you do have layers. And as a relationship-based person, I am looking forward to being able to be on a first-name basis with all staff, making sure that that they know me, I know them on a personal level and a professional level, and ensuring that, again, I'm out, I'm visible in schools, and that that every staff member knows that I have an open-door policy. My leadership style is very collaborative. I definitely believe in gathering lots of input on making sure that we all have similar core beliefs and and that we share the same values and that we work together on how we're going to accomplish our goals. And that only happens by building those trusting relationships and starting out at a very personal level. And in a in a district of 2,300, 2,400 students and 400 to 500 staff members, I know that that's possible. And again, it's it's very exciting. I'm eager to get into the community, meet all of the staff, and as well as the community members, our business leaders, our elected officials. I'm very excited to build close, personal relationships with all stakeholders. And I think it's a very special and unique community, and I'm excited to that 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 size appears to be just the right size to get to know everybody, but also big enough that we will have the resources to meet the needs of every student.
Yeah, and unfortunately, this past year, we've all kind of seen our stakeholders be at odds with each other. And that comes as a result of COVID, a switch in superintendents, whatever it may be. How do you plan on repairing what was once a really tight-knit community and uniting those who remain silent and also those who are really vocal?
Yeah, that was one of the the comments that came through loud and clear as the superintendent search consultants worked with the community, is that many people did feel they were there was a fracture, and they were looking for someone who who could come in and unite the community. And it was it was an area that of interest for me. I believe I have a skill set and the experience to do that. And so it's one of the things that that drew me to the position. In terms of my plans on on how to help unite that, because again, I can't do that by myself, right? We we need a team. We need all parents to step forward. We need all all students, all staff members to step forward, and we all have to want to come together. And I'm excited, again, to get in and build those relationships. I I always approach all situations from a sense of empathy. And I have empathy for our staff members. I know what a tough year it was, 14 months of being asked to do something we've never been asked to do. I have a great amount of empathy for our parents, trying to balance work, different school schedules, whether it's in-person or hybrid or, you know, e-learning. I believe it was very difficult for everyone. And so our our community members, I have a lot of empathy for what they went through. Our board members, I can't imagine being a a school board member during the last 14 months or a superintendent. There there's been a lot of stress and a lot of passion. And so first and foremost, I'm going to approach that from a sense of empathy and make sure that I am empathetic to each of those groups. But the other thing I want to do is is lead the lead the idea that we need to have empathy for our students, because our students went through a lot the last 14 months also. And although as adults, we may have struggled, many of our students, especially our younger students, probably had a hard time even processing what was going on. They knew they weren't in school with their friends. They knew they weren't building relationships with their teachers. They knew that that it was different. And so I also am going to constantly remind our community that although we need to have empathy for each other as adults, we need to have empathy for our students. So when I think about how we unite the community together, I'm gonna constantly remind people that we are the adults in the room, and we need to unite because our kids need us to. Our students, at the end of the day, are the ones who pay the price when we are fractured as a community. And so I want to constantly remind all of us that at times, we're gonna have to put our personal feelings aside and come together around the commonality that we have, which is we all want bright futures for our children, and understand that our our students are watching us, our children are watching us. We are models for them, and if they see that dissension and they see that that fracturedness in the community, it's not healthy for them. And so I want to continually ask that all of us as adults maybe put our differences aside and forge forward on a path that we can all agree on, because the success of our children depends on how quickly we can come together and work for the future.
What is your stance on equity and inclusion in school for students in schools, specifically for the LGBTQ+ community minorities and bearing socioeconomic statuses throughout the district? How do you tackle these issues? And to do so, what methods do you abide by?
So inclusion is one of my core beliefs, and again, one of the reasons why I've I've been a public servant for over two decades now. And again, one of the reasons that I was so interested in this position is I I saw lots of data and lots of research that spoke to a community that wanted to focus on equity and wanted to focus on on inclusion. And I believe inclusion is, it's the end, right? That's our goal, focusing on equity, celebrating diversity, those are means to that end. But I think that we all can agree on a sense of belonging is important. It's important for all students, all staff, all community members. And it's not good enough for some of our students to feel included at school. It's not good enough for some of our parents to feel like they are engaged in their in their school or that some of our staff feel that that they have the psychological safety to to be engaged at work. We need to make sure that each and every student, staff member, parent, and community member feels included in in everything that we're doing. And part of that is constantly using that lens of equity, that we all come from different backgrounds and those need to be respected, that we all have different needs, and we have different wants, and how we get there for each individual has to be diversified, that there's there's no one-size-fits-all for students or for staff members. And I think it's my my role as a leader in the community to constantly not only remind people of that, but make sure that we're creating the 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 structures where inclusion is important. And are we taking feedback? Do we have student perception surveys? Alicia, I don't know if you've had an opportunity during your schooling to give feedback to the superintendent on how well you feel included or if you feel a sense of belonging or if you feel that your classmates all have a sense of belonging. But just as we collect data on how well students are doing academically, we need to make sure we're collecting data on how included our students feel, on if our staff feel that they have a sense of belonging, and then work together, not only as a school district but as a community, to make sure that everyone feels a sense of belonging, because we know students aren't gonna learn if they don't feel safe. Staff members aren't going to be able to fully engage in their work if they don't feel included. And we know community members and parents won't be engaged in their students' learning or with us as a school district if for some reason they don't feel they have they have access to the school. I'm very excited to see that we have a translator tonight so that our Spanish-speaking parents have access to what we're talking about. Something as simple as making sure that we're communicating out in ways where all parents feel that they can be a part of what we're doing is important. And I'm I'm really interested to to get into the community and to get into the district and schools and see what we are currently doing and see how I can come in and add value and help to make sure we have even more access and opportunity for all.
Do you intend to implement critical race theory within our schools?
I do not. I think what I like to focus on is, again, inclusion. In my personal opinion, I believe critical race theory is often thrown out there as a term to try to divide us. And you will see my leadership style is focused on concepts that try to unite us. So again, if if we focus on inclusion, if we focus on a sense of belonging, I don't know of an individual out there who would say that's a bad thing, right? That we want everyone to feel like they belong. So I would I would rather focus on what's you not what unites us than focus on concepts that, you know, could possibly divide us as a community or as a student body. There there's enough work to do to make sure that all students, staff, parents, community members feel engaged with our district, and I think we can focus on those who do great work.
Yeah, and on the topic of inclusion, do you have plans to add career-focused courses for students? For example, a course on real estate, do you see non-college tracks as important?
So I believe that pathways for all students are very important. I think that we have to engage with our students, really get an understanding of what their passions are, their interests, their skill set, and make sure that every student has access to whatever pathway they want. For many of our students, that is a a very rigorous academic program that goes straight into a a four-year college. For some of our students, it could be earning industry certification or getting that associate's degree before they graduate high school. And again, if we are gonna focus on inclusion, we need to make sure that we not only have all of those pathways available, but that all of our students, all of our children, are aware of each of those pathways and help to celebrate each one of those, because if some appear to be valued more than others, we might not get students to take full advantage of that. Again, that was something I saw very clearly in the literature and the and the research that came out of the superintendent search input sessions. And as I looked into that, I think the district is is doing a great job with those. I'm not sure the entire community knows all the opportunities that are available at Carmel High School. But I think one of the most important things I would do initially is come in and talk to students. Are there opportunities that you want that you don't know about? Or are there opportunities that you want that we don't have? And how might we be able to either work with neighboring school districts, work with neighboring colleges and universities to provide those, whether it's career and technical education or dual enrollment opportunities? Again, I think this is a situation where we have a talented enough staff and enough resources that we should be able to provide that personalized and individualized education for every student.
Yeah, and on the elementary school level, um, one of my, one of the concerns that parents brought up was next fall and even this summer and what that looks like in terms of childcare. And I think that has a little bit to do with pathways in a way, like just being educated and, you know, going, being educated to your full possibilities as a student, but also supporting those students who have fallen behind. So do you have any plan for providing extra opportunities or childcare or summer programs that can help further elementary and middle school students along?
So I certainly hear that as as a need and a want from the community. I know that the current staff has worked on a very comprehensive summer school plan, and I would want to come in and learn more. There are, there's great work that's happening, and I think there's a lot of questions about what's going to be available. But as as someone who's coming in new to the district, I certainly don't want to come in and and say this is what we're gonna be doing or that's what we're going to be doing until I have a full understanding of what's currently happening. But certainly, we have students who, whether they've fallen behind or they didn't get the extracurricular opportunities that they wanted, there is a need with 14 months of interrupted learning, there's going to be a a need to look deeply into every student. I think we can best through that do that through a very robust, multi-tiered system of support plan, not to get too too technical with with our parents on the on the call, but each of each of our schools has systems where we're looking at individual kids. We're looking at their data. We're looking at their needs and making sure that we're differentiating for each of those students. Some of that remediation or intervention could certainly come during summer school. Some of that could come during the school year next year. 14 months of uninterrupted learning is probably, based on on the the research that's come out of of that field, is not going to be fixed overnight. And much of the academic work is is not going to be fixed until we make sure that all of our students feel physically and psychologically safe. And that that means a heavy focus on social emotional learning, a heavy focus on mental wellness, which I know the district has put a lot of time, effort, and resources into. And I would just need to come in and learn a little more about what is currently in place. But I know that's definitely a focus of the current staff, and I look forward to coming in and partnering with them and helping to support that work.
Yeah, we have a lot of working parents within our district. How will you prioritize childcare and after-school childcare? Yeah, we have a lot of working parents within our district. Um, how will you prioritize childcare and after school childcare?
Yeah, I think again, that's a a question where I need to know a little bit more about what we're currently doing and what the need is from our community. A a robust before and after school education program, I think, is very important. Do we need academic support during that time? Do we need enrichment support during that time? What resources do we have? One of the great things about coming in new to a position like this is I get to ask a lot of questions and see what it is that we're doing, what is working? Do we have challenges right now to providing that before and after school uh care for our students? And if so, how might we be able to overcome those? And as I enter the district and spend, you know, the first few months really getting out of the community and listening, as I think as I hear some of those stories from parents, it will give me a better idea of what questions to ask. But definitely, I'm assuming not something that our staff isn't aware of. And I I'm sure there are very, you know, very good plans moving forward. But again, I would need to come in and and see what's already been established.
Of course, and I'm not sure if you're aware, but recently CUSD has seen uproar of concerns around sexual assault harassment, the culture of the two um and the handling around them. How do you see yourself addressing our current situation from the K through the twelfth grade level? And can you outline the steps that you will take to address this?
Sure, it's a very serious issue and an issue that we that we see across the country. Um, and you know, as a as a husband and a and a father of a daughter, I first want to apologize that anyone is is going through this. It's it's definitely not something that, again, any father or any husband wants to hear. And so it it's it's something that hits me at my core and something that I'm very passionate about. A- as many people know, I am the the current uh compliance officer and Title IX coordinator for my current district where we're really focusing on making sure that we have a safe environment for students. And I know that's what uh the school district is doing as well. I know there have been uh things put in place this year. And I think it's the right work in terms of making sure that we are educating students and and really helping people reflect on their, how their behavior is not creating the culture that we want for all students. Making sure that we have processes in place and that students know what is appropriate and what isn't. They know how to report that we have very strict uh anti-retaliation policies in practice so that students feel comfortable coming forward and making sure that we do work to change that culture. And that happens with our students, our staff and our parents. And it's it it is a process that I know has, again, has begun uh at the high school level. And I believe coming in, I I have a lot of knowledge in this area, so I don't want to assume anything is or isn't being done. But it's an area where I look to come in and ask a lot of questions and make sure that we are uh doing everything that we can to make sure that all of our students feel safe, not just um that our young ladies feel safe from sexual harassment or assault, but that all of our students um feel safe from any type of discrimination. And again, that we're focusing on inclusion and making sure that that all of our students know that if they're feeling uncomfortable in any way, that that's not okay. And that they have trusted adults in the building that we would want them to go to and that we have a a system of supportive measures that we can put in place to make sure that that you are taken care of and that this doesn't happen again. And so it's definitely not um an easy answer. It's not an overnight fix. What I am i- in watching this from afar, um, as unfortunate as it is that this has happened, I am I am proud of the young ladies that brought that forward. In many districts, you don't hear about this um because it's it's, people don't want to bring it forward or they fear retaliation, or they they fear what might happen. So I I want to thank the the young ladies in the community who have had the courage to come forward and and speak up and say that this isn't okay. And that's now my job to come in and make sure that we are creating a culture that is safe and conducive to learning and that if by chance something does happen, we have very clear policies and procedures in place to stop that immediately and and again, continue to to change to a more inclusive culture.
Do you plan on um expanding the education systems already in place at CUSD on sexual assault and harassment to include more and to reach more age groups?
So I would need to come in and see exactly what we're doing. If for some reason I felt it wasn't enough, of course, there there would, there is, there's nothing more important than making sure that our students and staff feel physically and psychologically safe at school. And so if that's a value we have, we would need to put resources towards that. But I would need to come in and see what we have in place. And again, talk with our students, talk with our staff and see if they feel it's enough. Oftentimes, as adults, we come up with great plans. But if we talk to you as a student and it's it's not getting down to that level or it's not working, we might need to rethink it. But I would certainly need to see what what's in place and gather some data on whether or not it's working. But I do know the the want, the desire and the effort and the plan is there from the staff already in the school district, and I applaud them for taking this head on and and working towards it. And I look at coming in and and again, just seeing if I can add value to that work that's already being done.
Would you consider hiring an outside independent consultant to review past management, communication, investigative techniques, um, policies and procedures um surrounding this topic um in the future?
If we needed to, um, a- again, I think I would need to come in and see what I can determine myself. But certainly, if if someone from the outside were were needed to come in, I wouldn't want to take any option off the table with a a situation as serious as this. But I just don't know if if it would be needed or not. I would like to believe that we have the the knowledge and experience in the district that we could, we could get to the bottom of this. And I like I said, I know a plan's already been been put in place. But if we needed further support, if we didn't have the knowledge, if we didn't have the expertise, of course, we would want to want to reach out to others and see if they could help us.
Um, on another note, uh, what is your position on private money charter schools and vouchers within a public school district?
Sure, so that I I don't know how popular that topic is in California, but it it sure is in in Colorado. And and some in the community may know that I came from a school district that um does have a lot of charter schools that um did attempt to offer vouchers to parents. And i- it, that's not necessarily a core belief of mine. To probably the intent of the question, no, I have no desire to come to Carmel and and institute a voucher system or uh proliferate charter schools. I do believe in parental choice, and I believe parents know their students best and know what kind of environment they want for their student. And my goal is, again, to come in and create that atmosphere in Carmel where all of our public neighborhood schools are great options for our students and we're inclusive and we're meeting the needs of students regardless of where they're at or what their hopes and aspirations are. And I think if we do that and we do that well, there's not a need for any other options.
Um, so most students at Karma High School and Karma Middle School have experienced hostile intruder lockdowns. What is your policy and plan to protect CUSD students in case these events occur again? How do you communicate your policies um regarding this to your staff and administration? How can you ensure that they know what to do in case of an emergency?
So physical safety is is something you've heard me mention a couple of times tonight and obviously something that's very important. But how you achieve physical safety is is incumbent upon the values of your community. So it's something, again, I would want to come in and talk with students and parents and staff and really find out what their values are around physical safety. We have some communities that um desperately want armed school resource officers. We have other communities that don't. We have schools that believe in doing lockdown drills because they want students to be prepared. And we have communities that say, I don't want to put my child through that trauma. So the first thing that I would need to do is come in and really understand the values of the community, have a a understanding of what is currently in place in our school and then make sure that we have a plan that ensures the physical safety of all of our students. But I, physical safety to me, just to get a little philosophy into the question, always comes second to psychological safety. The the best thing that we can do to keep students safe in our in our schools and in our classrooms is make sure that everyone in the community uh feels included to make sure that everyone in our in our community has those social and emotional learning skills that we focus on mental wellness. And so you're you're always going to see me come at safety from an angle of, are we taking care of our students? Are we taking care of our staff? And are they mentally well? Are they psychologically safe? And if so, great, now what do we need to do with physical safety? At the end of the day, you can put all the physical safety, building, hardening and and different deterrents in place. But if our students don't feel psychologically safe, um, they're not going to be at their best. If our staff don't feel psychologically safe, they're not going to be at their best. So I I think it's a, it's a parallel track of physical and psychological safety. And again, the how is very dependent upon the values of the community. And I would would not want to assume what the community of Carmel values in terms of physical safety uh deterrence. And so I would want to come in and and really get to know the community before I weighed in on any of the the decisions and what's happening now.
Um, and just to circle back again, what exactly does it mean to understand what your community wants? And like I said before, we have a very vocal group of parents and we also have a very silent group of parents and group of stakeholders just because of the way our district is set up. So what does that mean to you to understand and really hear everybody's voice?
Sure, there there is a a silent group of of parents and community members in every district in our country. And my role is going to be to build relationships with those folks and make sure that they have a voice and that that I'm hearing um from those parents as well. Oftentimes, that might be uh parents from groups that are marginalized. Maybe they're working two or three jobs, or maybe there's a language barrier. And so they never really get their voice out there. It's going to be my job to create, again, that inclusive environment where people feel comfortable coming forward. And I believe that's that's my role and that's spending a lot of time, whether it's in town halls like this, individual meetings, coffees, parent groups, um, staff meetings, uh, meeting with groups of students. I I really want to learn what it is that the community values. What are their beliefs? What are their hopes for students? What is it that that they think the district is doing well? Where do they believe we have opportunities for growth? And and again, the 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 art of that is pulling all of that together and working with the staff to say, now that we know that, what is our plan? What what goals do we need to put in place and how do we start moving forward? But if I don't have a clear understanding of what our parents i- in all corners of the district want for their children, or I don't have a full understanding of what you as students want for your future, we could make a lot of mistakes or we could spend a lot of resources going down the wrong road. And it's why you'll hear me say over and over again, my first ninety days, hundred days, several months into the district will be spent actively listening to our community because I I I have no desire to come into the community and start making changes. I need to know what it is that the community values. I need to know what we're doing well. And then we collectively need to decide how we're going to move forward and what it is we want to accomplish, understanding we may have some differing views across the district. But again, we're going to have some things in common as well in terms of what we want for our kids. And those are the things we're going to be able to focus on.
Yeah, um, so USD has seen quite a bit of turnover within the superintendent position. How do you feel your experience um and your skill sets qualify you for longevity um within this position?
Well, I think anytime you have turnover and that's unfortunately more common than you might think in the superintendent role across our country. It's a very difficult job and it was made even more difficult by the pandemic. And I I believe coming in and and having empathy and really wanting to engage myself in the community, become a part of the fabric of the community is is going to go a long ways in making sure that that I am successful. I also believe uniting the community. One of the reasons superintendents might not stick around is if there is constant divisiveness in the community, that takes a toll on people. And it it isn't just superintendent turnover. It it is teacher turnover, it's leadership turnover because that that divisiveness just takes a toll on you as an an individual and as as a human being. And so part of, part of my stability in the district will be uniting the community so that the staff um feels that that there is some level of harmony. As a as a career educator, I often tell people, people like me who got into education to make a difference for students, we want to do the work of teaching and learning, right? Crisis management isn't why we got into this. It isn't what excites us. We want to work with students, we want to work and collaborate with other educators. And I think when you have anything that pulls you away from that work, i- it's going to create some unhappiness because you're not meeting your calling. And so in order to bring stability to the district, one of the things that I want to do, again, is unite us around a a common purpose. And that is not spending a lot of time looking backwards at at what we might have done wrong, but again, challenging all of us as adults to move forward and focus on what we need to do for our children because that's what they need us to do. Because at the end of the day, um, you know, we might have parents that that get upset because of superintendent turnover. It it may be tough on our staff, but at the end of the day, it is always the children who suffer from turnover. Whether it's the teacher, whether it's the principal, whether it's the superintendent, when you can't get stability and you can't keep moving forward, our children suffer. And so I I want to make sure that we understand, we're not, we're not asking the the community and and all of our stakeholders um to move forward as adults. We're asking, let's do that because that's what our kids need. And we know that in areas of this country where that doesn't happen, that turnover continues. In in areas of the country where we as adults can't get past our differences and can't start rowing in the same direction, that turnover continues. And again, at the end of the day, it's our kids that suffer. And that not only creates additional staff turnover, but then once you get more staff turnover, parents get, th- they get upset and maybe take their students to another district or something like that. And and that cycle just continues. And I want to make sure that that our community clearly understands how if we don't have a collaborative spirit and appropriate behavior, what that cycle looks like two years from now, five years from now, ten years from now. And we just have to be honest as adults that we're going to have to put our differences aside and move forward so that we don't have that turnover because our students, um, they deserve that. They deserve the stability, not only at the superintendent level, but at all levels of the organization.
What is that direction that you would like to see our community and our stakeholders rally around?
So I I have, obviously, as a as a career long educator, I have my core values and I have my ideas, things that I would like to focus on. And and one of the the difficult balances as a leader is you have to have a vision. You have to know where you want an organization to go, but you also want that vision to be shared. And so rather than specifics, I try to look at 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 big rocks, at things that I value. You've heard me talk a lot about one of them tonight, and that is inclusion. I want to come in and make sure that we are creating a very inclusive environment. I also believe in focusing on responsible innovation. We know that the the world that you are going to inherit, Alicia, is not the world that I inherited. And so we have to make sure that we are continuing to move forward. Is reading, writing, arithmetic still important? You bet it is. But there are also other skills that students need to graduate high school with. And one of the nice things that to kind of dovetail a lot of this work together is in bringing your community together and bringing your businesses together and bringing your parents together. As adults, we all know that. We know that kids that come out of our high schools that maybe don't have the well-rounded education or don't have the skill set to be successful in a in a global world, I think we can rally and unite around that. And so I think focusing on larger concepts, making sure that we have very high academic standards, but also making sure that we have career pathways for students. And that, again, we're we're responsible in that innovation. I I have a core belief that we should not ask teachers to do anything different that we haven't trained them to do or given them the resources to do. So if we're going to ask our staff to think a little differently, we have to make sure that we do that in a way where they have the resources, they have the they have the training and they're part of that, right? We we don't do things to people, that that never works, we do it with them. And so I have some core beliefs or I think some cornerstones of where I think education needs to, needs to go. And I think COVID has presented that with an opportunity to really look at the world differently and engage the community, our teachers, our parents, our business members and and especially our students. And what do we want our education system to look like five years from now? What is our vision for Carmel Unified? Again, I have some ideas, but this isn't about me, right? This is your education. And again, if I want ownership out of our students, out of our staff, out of our parents, it can't be my vision. So my role is going to be to try and and be as honest and transparent as I can about where I think we should go and find areas of commonality that we can move forward while being very conscious that this district has been extremely successful with what it's been doing and has great staff members, great students and continues to be um at the forefront and and a well-known school district across the country. But I'm interested in engaging the community on, are there areas we can improve? Are there are there things where where we can help? And and that starts with asking you and and your classmates, what did we do well? What do we need to do different? And and just having that engagement. And again, if those are the types of conversations we start having in our community, I think that unity will come a long ways because um, again, we're focusing on something positive. We're focusing on moving forward. We're focusing on things that matter to our children. And I believe we will be able to rebuild some relationships and strengthen relationships that we already have by doing that very difficult work.
Yeah, and like you mentioned, we have, there's no arguing that we have world-class teachers at CUSD. How do you plan on engaging with and listening to um and interacting and leading um our teachers?
No, it's, none of this gets done with without our teachers. And I still consider myself a teacher. I I spent, um, I I, you know, spent several years in the classroom and I've continued to teach. More recently, it's it's been at the college level, teaching um up-and-coming administrators. But I've never forgot um what it was like to be a teacher. I've never taken my teacher hat off. And I believe engaging with teachers is imperative. Again, they are where the rubber meets the road. They are the ones in the classroom doing the work and they have to have ownership of their classroom, just like I'm asking students to have ownership of their education. And I don't know that you can have enough engagement. I don't know that you can have enough input or enough feedback. And again, I, it's going to be my job to create a a structure and a culture where that happens formally and informally, whether that's meeting with representative groups of teachers formally or, again, being in schools. You know, one of my favorite questions to ask teachers is, what's keeping you up at night? Because my job is is to clear the road for you. And so just continuing to have those conversations and make sure that our teachers have the resources that they need. Coming out of the pandemic, it's going to be very important just to ask our teachers how they are doing. It's been a very difficult um fourteen months. We've asked teachers to do things that they never thought they would have to do in an extremely quick amount of time. And um I I've seen countless teachers um just completely change their their entire structure of their classroom and do miracles. And I know that it's frustrating because oftentimes that wasn't enough. It it wasn't always enough to meet the needs of every student. It wasn't enough to meet the demands of working parents. And so part of my role is going to be coming in and making sure that our teachers are okay. Not only is there, you know, potentially some healing that needs to happen in our community, our teachers need a breath right now. And there's some healing that's going to need to happen with our staff. And we have to make sure that, again, they have the resources that they need and that they have a a large voice in our direction moving forward. And so you will, you will see me informally and formally engaging um with our staff. And and again, not only our teachers, we we don't want to forget the numerous support folks in the system that that allow that great education in the classroom to happen. And it's going to be my job to elevate their voice as well. And so, again, getting to know those values, building those relationships and making sure that we forge a path together is essential.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. And those are all the questions I have for you. I know you have a presentation, I didn't leave much room for it, but I would love to hear more um about you and about your passion or history. So if you want to um run a little over timing and present that now, I'd love to hear it.
You bet. If Tricia wants to get it up and running, it might be a little redundant, so I'll skip the the redundant parts. And and kind of run through that real quick. But I I just, before I start, I want to thank you again, Alicia, for your work tonight and the work that you did uh preparing for tonight. You've you've done an excellent job and can't wait to see what you do in the future. I also want to thank the board. I want to thank uh Tricia Zarevich for all the work that that she's put in these last couple of days. Getting this up and running in the last two days, I think, was very difficult. The various staff members in the IT department, um translation, a- all of that. It, I think it was was a lot of work to get this done in just a couple of days. I also want to thank all the community members who sent um all the questions in. These were were great questions, really gave me a chance to talk a little bit about my vision. If we can go to the next slide, Tricia, I can. All right, so um really quickly, I talked a little bit about still wearing my teacher hat. And I I like to joke, just like the the country western song, I was country before country was cool. I was a STEM teacher before STEM was cool. And so I I started out, uh, boy, almost twenty-five years ago now as a as a middle school STEM teacher. And in addition um to the topic of inclusivity tonight, we had several students that school, traditional school just wasn't working for. And so we created an in-house alternative school. And I was able to teach language arts and math uh in those classes and just really gave me a great foundation uh as I moved into administration. And I was a a building administrator at every level, elementary, middle, high school. In my uh elementary experience, uh had a a great foundation of early literacy, got to work with with preschool-age students and really understand how important um that early intervention with our youngest students, how important that is. It's probably one of the best places we can put our resources. And so um that elementary experience was invaluable to me. I've also had several positions within the central office level. I've been a chief academic officer, uh curriculum instruction and assessment coordinator and uh an assistant superintendent for the last last eight years. I also, for about ten years, was a an educational consultant, which I think oftentimes I learned more um doing that work than I, than the folks that I was was working with and for. But I was able to work with school districts of various sizes, rural, urban, suburban settings, and and did several things. I was able to help coach teachers and administrators as well as um work on, how do you evaluate an educational system? How do you go in and and look at what's working and what's not working and collaboratively make plans moving forward? So just a little bit about my background and I'm sure we'll be able to talk a little bit more about that in the future. But that's kind of a a a quick Reader's Digest version. Tricia, if we could go to the next slide. So let's talk a little bit, um, I'm always grounded in philosophy. And so to talk a little bit about my why, again, you heard me say I've been a a public educator for almost twenty-five years now. It's it's all I've ever done. And as a child of poverty, education opened doors for me that simply would not ha- have happened. And I went into education to do for others what my teachers, what my coaches did for me. And it's my way of giving back and it's probably why I'm such an advocate for inclusion and making sure that students of all backgrounds have what they need to move forward. And again, you heard me talk a little bit about innovation and making sure that all of our students are college, career and citizenship ready. I don't want to be too redundant on that one because I think we talked about that quite a bit. And I know we're running short on time. I think we have two more slides, Tricia. Yeah, so really quickly, we might have members of the community, I I'm sure, thinking, why Carmel Unified? Why, why do you want to come out here to the West Coast? And and, you know, my joke in the interview process was, have, do you know where you live? I mean, everybody knows Carmel is probably one of the most beautiful places in the in the country. So when you see that job posting come up, I be- I believe anybody's going to look at that. But what I was so excited about is as I looked deeper and realized what a great school district that has great community support and, again, world-class academics, athletics, the arts, you name it, um, that just what a what a great place um for students. And I think the the philosophy of what uh Carmel Unified stands for, lifelong learning um is a core value of mine. Again, when you have a statement that talks about college, career and citizenship ready, I believe that's what we have to do for all students. And as I looked at at the feedback that came out of the input sessions, I saw this desire for someone who had the skill set to come in and unify the district, focus on all students and make sure that we had a clear plan moving forward. And I felt those were all skills that I had developed um over years with working with other great leaders and and staff members and felt that I could come in and and add value and really help the district uh on its path. And the the final slide is just really about my my entry into the district and the purpose of my hundred-day plan. And again, it's really to come in and learn about the Carmel School District and the Carmel Community. I I've really just developed one goal at this point and that is to engage with all stakeholders, students, staff, parents, community members, and make sure that I'm building collaborative and transparent relationships. Because again, I've got to understand the history of the district. I have to understand the values of the community before we collectively can sit down and prioritize those goals that will get us to where we we collectively want to go. And so please let me assure you that that that's what you will see out of me. The first several months is someone who wants to come in and actively listen, celebrate the great things that were going on and start having that conversation towards the end of that, of what collectively do we want to accomplish? And how are we best going to do that? So again, thank you for everyone who was involved in tonight. As as Sarah said, I'll sit down and summarize my answers for all the questions that I did answer. And we might have got to all of them, but if we didn't, um, I'll I'll add any more in there. And I look forward to to doing these often as well as some more informal um meetings with stakeholders, parents, students, staff. We'll be seeing each other a lot. So again, thank you so much and thank you to all the folks that made this happen tonight. And Alicia, great, great uh job tonight and good luck in your future. You are going to make Carmel proud and and do wonderful things. Thank you again for your your time tonight.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Alicia. And Ted, thank you for your time this evening. Thank you for outlining your hundred-day plan for our community. And thank you for all of the really thoughtful and thorough answers to the questions that Alicia asked you. I know all of the questions that Alicia asked you are really on, you know, the top, the tip of everybody's tongue here in the community. So I'm looking forward to diving deeper into some of those topics as you get more acclimated with our culture and our teachers and our staff and our community. And as I mentioned earlier, this might be the first town hall, but it's definitely not the last one. So thank you for everybody involved. I hope I hope everybody enjoys a long, well-deserved three-day weekend. Thank you for joining us this evening and I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.